All right, good evening and welcome to the USD 290 Board of Education meeting. It is June 8th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. I will call this meeting to order and we have and we have, I'm sorry, I'm hearing myself over there. I'm not sure I can do that.[454.01][454.01](Laughter).
A little reverb.
We have five board members here physically. We have one board member, Mr. Wingert, who's joining us virtually this evening. So please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved to second.
Hey, it's been moved by Susan Ward and seconded by Linda Alderman that we approve tonight's agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, and that passes six oh. We have a consent agenda tonight. We have quite a few items on there. Dr. Cobb, is there anything you want to mention out of the ordinary?
There's nothing extraordinary on there. There is a couple of grants on there that I think it's important for us to identify, the work that Josh has done on the TIB grant, the Kenny Bento grant, the work that Stella Tharp did on the Perkins grant, which is a significant grant. Josh, again, on parent and orientation contract. And then the food service grant is a new one through Green Bush that we just got to check for today for $6,000 to help pay for our food service through June. So as we know, as we continue to provide free meals for our community through June 30th, this will at least take some of the cost off of us in terms of the transportation of those meals. So we'll utilize that to pay for transportation services and be certainly help in the right direction.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cobb. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
It was moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Chris Cunningham that we approve tonight's consent agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes six oh as well, thank you. All right, we don't have any comments from the public tonight. We will go ahead and move to section five and Dr. Cobb's is going to represent a brief statement on the OHH track, which we discussed at length last time, but we are bringing back to the table tonight.
Yeah, so there's really not a lot more to discuss here. This option was tabled last time to give us a month to consider and bring back for options. So again, two different options you have from different companies. One would be to simply fill the cracks that exist. The other would be basically a complete redo of the track. My recommendation would be a complete redo of the track. It certainly saves us in the long run for what we want to accomplish would be at about $431,000, just under $431,000 total dollars. There certainly is money in the capital budget. You also received information that we would see that capital budget grow to almost $4 million in the next two years if we don't utilize it to maintain the facilities that we currently have. So there certainly is the opportunity for us to do this and provide a great facility for our kids moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb. Does anyone at this time wish to take an action?
Madam President, I make a motion at this time, we spend $4,500 to repair the cracks in the track.
Okay, any discussion before we vote? Or before we, I asked for a second, sorry. All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we spend $4,500 to repair the track. That was brought by Melidia Payne and seconded by Chris Cunningham. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, raise your hand. That'd be fun.
What's the motion?
The motion was $4,500 to fill the cracks in the track.
$4,500 to fill, okay.
Yep. So we have one, two, two yeses.
Yep, nope, that's Harold.
Three yeses. All opposed, raise your hand. Okay, and that's opposed at, or that motion fails at three, three. Actually, yeah, at a tie, it fails for three, three. Is there any other, any other motions for this topic tonight?
I make a motion that we completely redo the track as stipulated here. And I don't have the exact, I was just looking for the exact amount because you're supposed to include that, but it's.
There's one in the recommended action, I think it's $430,782, I believe.
I want to make sure that we fix what problems are there, I guess, is my reasoning for that. I think we have the monies now. We can't use the monies for anything else. I think it's important that we get this rectified. It's part of our face in the community, so I guess that's why I'm making the motion.
Any discussion before I ask for a second?
Well, I'm going to second Susan's motion. Basically, I think that when we do this, we need to do it right the first time instead of throwing $4,500 bucks a year at it, which is, isn't that what was the first motion?
Yeah.
The $4,500. Instead of throwing $4,500 a year at fixing cracks, which we don't know if it's going to work, we don't know if it's not going to work, we don't know, that's not physically responsible. We're not doing what we, what I think the community wants us to do, which is do it right and do it right the first time. I also don't want to tell the community and parents that, oh gee gosh, no, we can't have a track meet this year because we still have cracks in the track, which if we keep throwing money down a rabbit hole, that could definitely happen. If we're going to be tearing up things anyway to replace the turf or to put in the turf, to install the turf, then we might as well fix it and fix it correctly instead of in five years having to tear that turf up and then fix it again. And we're just going to be spending more money than what a complete track improvement would be right now. And so I think this is the most physically responsible motion that we have.
I support the track and doing what we need to. I'm just concerned about spending that large amount of money at this time with all the uncertainties that we have with funding and how we, that we don't really know how things are going to play out with the revenue losses that we've had recently. And I would just like to, just, it's not a no forever. For me, it's just a not right now on the large amount.
Well, I just don't want to get phone calls from the community saying, why didn't you do it right the first time, which is what will happen.
I guess, I guess for me, to that point is we have the monies now. We can't bet on future earnings or what will be there in the future, I guess, because of the instability of taxing amounts and those kind of things.
Yeah, but that goes both ways too. I mean, if we don't spend it, it's not going to go anywhere.
Yeah, but if.
If you don't get any more in, it does, then you don't ever replenish. And if we don't think we're not going to fill $1.27 billion in revenue loss by the state, eventually, we are. I think we're kidding ourselves.
We will, we will for sure.
It may not be this year's financing, it may not be next school year's financing, but eventually, the trickle down, we're going to feel it.
Yeah, but we still can't use that money for anything except capital.
I totally understand that capital money is capital money.
There may be other capital things that would take precedent, and if we can't replenish it the way we have been used to, I'm concerned about it not being there for something else that may.
And we don't even know if we're going to run on a track this year. That's uncertain too.
I think we can address a couple of things there. One, this is our greatest pressing capital need. All of our buildings are fairly new. All of our roofs are fairly new. All of our HVAC systems are fairly new. The monies that we have in place for, for capital projects over the course of the next four and five years are all well within the budget expenses that we have right now. So if there were a time to do this, this would be the time to do it. I think as with any budget, you make adjustments as budget changes occur. I guess my greatest concern is that if we don't do this now, when are we going to do it? Because budget uncertainty exists every year. This is, this is the right time to do it. It's the time that makes the most sense when we're already dealing with a company that is going to lay down and turf and do all of those things. It will only cost our district more money to do this down the road. There is no way that, that next year that we will be able to do this same project for $431,000. Next year, it will be $450,000, $460,000. The year after that, it'll be $500,000. We'll just continue to see the cost of construction go up and up and up. This is going to be the cheapest it's ever going to be for us to do this. And this is going to be the time when we have the most wherewithal to be able to do it. But again, this is a decision for the board to make and a decision that you all need to make.
And I'm not willing to tell our track and field kids that, that no, we're not going to fix what they practice on. I'm also not willing to tell the parents of these track and field kids, some of whom have gone to the Junior Olympics, that no, we can't host a track meet here at Ottawa because our track is in such disrepair that, that we can't do it. I think it's important for our kids to fix this and fix it now when we have the money because it's not going to get cheaper to do it.
I think what stands out to me is looking at that this is our greatest capital need right now, and I don't feel comfortable with our, our capital funds approaching $4 million and not spending this money now while we have it, especially when the cost is only going to go up. And the end of life of this track is, is nearing. We don't have a lot of time left on it anyway. It is in disrepair. There's work that needs to be done in the area for, for the turf anyway. It would be different if we had just redone our track recently and we wanted just something all new because we want something new. But that's not the case. It's something that needs to be done. And when we look at, how many years do we have left on this track?
So there's five years left on the, the life expectancy of the track. I would indicate that previous construction has limited that life expectancy based upon watershed and ultimately why we're seeing cracks in the, in the track. So I don't know that that's, there's any resulting fault in that. What, what the issue is, is that over the course of time, the, the structures that, that exist there within the, within the football stadium have, have limited the life expectancy of our track. And ultimately redoing such would take care of those issues and create a lifespan of more certainty moving forward.
Because we are going to feel the backlash of the, of the statewide loss in revenue. And we have the money now, but in five years, I don't feel confident that we'll have it. We may, we may not, but just looking ahead to, we know what we're going to have to do. So I'm going to support this movement whenever we, whenever we vote. Is there any other discussion?
Why are we always so worried about being over $3 million? We should have that kind of money left in capital after we just finished a $63 million bond project.
So.
Hold on, I'm not done.
Okay.
We've addressed so many things in the bond project, therefore, we didn't have to touch anything in capital. And I don't, I guess I don't understand the reasoning why we need to always keep it under 3 million unless that is something coming from Topeka to justify why we continue to collect taxes. And if that's the case, that's, that's the type of politics I don't agree with, but.
But this, this, I wouldn't say this isn't a political issue. Everything's political. But if you look at the institutional history of USD 290, we've generally kept around 2 million in capital outlay as far as I can remember. Susan, isn't that about right?
Two, two.
And, and to have this type of money in capital outlay sometimes has sent a message to Topeka that your district is, has more money than you need and therefore we may need to rethink school finance here a little bit. And so you've got, you've got to think that way as well, and that has happened. I mean, they've used that argument before to not send enough money to school. I mean, granted, we cannot spend capital outlay money on, on teacher salaries, but the, but the state legislators do not see that. They just see you've got this money.
It's also going to get to a point that your facilities are in such good shape, then you're just going to be finding something to spend it on just to spend it down.
That's, well, that's conjecture.
So there are a couple of things to consider here. One is that the reason that, that school districts typically try to put a cap on their, on their funds, specifically their reserve funds, is because there is always a notion that Topeka will sweep those funds in times of crisis. So even if you choose not to spend them now, you may not get them back as they come in and sweep those funds. And this is a conversation that Topeka has with us every year. It's ultimately why they tell you not to keep your reserve funds above a certain percentage because if you look at that, if you're, if KSDE in the state sees you above that level, you're going to get that phone call saying, why aren't you spending this money? The other part is, is we start talking about not wanting to spend capital dollars because our facilities are in such great shape, that would be one thing. The issue here is we're choosing not to spend capital dollars when our facilities are not in great shape. We have something to fix, something that obviously needs fixed. You can, you can put your hand down the cracks that are in the track, and we're choosing not to fix it out of fear when the money is there. The money is there. If we choose not to fix it, that's, that's on us as a board to say, hey, look, what we said was it wasn't important enough for us to do this. And if, if that's where we're at, then okay, we'll walk out of here with a united front stating that, that that was the decision that our board made.
But wasn't that what you were planning to do in March? Was to do the 4,500 and fill the cracks?
Yes, before we understood the complexities of what was going on with the track, yes. Yep. So the conversation of the track created a greater investigation as to what is going on with the track, certainly is in a state of, of need for repair. Because of the money situation that we are in, we have the opportunity to do it now. That, that is the change in the conversation, is that prior to this, there wasn't the understanding that we had the dollars within our capital budget that we do now. Part of that was because the turf project came in well under budget. Part of it is because we did a great job with the bond and had dollars left over. So there are dollars within that capital budget for us to, to address further needs with. Track has some need for repair.
And, and I agree with you. In March, I, I don't think we realized the extent of the repair that that track needed, but you were asked to pursue it and investigate further and realize that there had been some significant damage done through, with some water issues. And if we're going to put in turf, we might as well fix the track and get it all done at once. Also, we have had money swept from our funds, haven't we, by the state, when things got rough?
Would have been prior to my time.
In a reduction.
Yes.
As what we were expecting and they stayed eight, that's what.
Yeah, yeah. Certainly in January, we've seen payments not come in as.
Construction funds, did you say, that we also need to?
There is, there's a small amount of, of bond proceeds still there, yep.
Okay, so we have the money.
Money is there.
We have the money.
Okay, well, I wanted to, we wanted to go through, Shannon and Josh may be up here also,
Is there any further discussion before we take a vote? All right, it's been moved and seconded that we do a track replacement for $430,000.
but we wanted to go through some of the feedback that we received from a survey that was sent out to our parents on just how things went in the last seven weeks.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, we have three yeses, all opposed, please raise your hand.
Because this, the information that we get from this survey helps us to make preparation for the beginning of the year or in the event that if we're able to start the year on time
No.
No vote.
There's a no vote.
Okay, all those who are abstained.
No vote at all?
I was going to see if you wanted to abstain.
Yeah.
Harold, are you wanting to abstain from voting?
Can you even hear?
in a normal fashion, what may be a new normal fashion, if we were to have to stop instruction
Harold, can you hear me?
I'm having a hard time hearing.
Yep, Harold, are you a yes vote for complete track, track replacement?
No.
No.
Okay, so that ties three, three, so the motion fails.
again or stop school again as we know it, to be able to make sure that we are much more
So the gates remain locked and the track is unusable?
prepared for that. So first of all, I want to thank all of the parents that did take, that did fill out
Well, the track is unusable because the turf company is getting ready to come in
the survey because I want parents to understand that we really do use this information and
and say that it's unusable because of the disrepair, but certainly not in great shape.
we do, really do appreciate the feedback.
All right, so we are going to move on to survey feedback on reports and presentations.
That we have gotten a committee of teachers together from all levels, working through what we are calling our online learning committee so that we can, again, talk about those things that we can be proactive about. We've also had some parent committees that have gone on where we've actually talked face to face with parents to be able to get information from them and get their feedback on what they felt went well and what they feel like we might improve on. Overall, I would like to just share that I've read every single one of the parent comments and, and I, I think overall, they were all very positive and that I think parents, the feedback that we received were very much appreciative of how the district jumped in and the support that we had from all of the teachers and the administrators and the board on something that nobody could have ever expected and we had to, in a very short amount of time, come up with a plan. But they were able to give us a lot of specific feedback that will help guide us towards providing, developing a plan that hopefully will be much better if we ever do need to reinstate some type of a continual learning plan. So this first slide shows you that we've had pretty fair, equal representation from all grade levels, which is super helpful, that we didn't just get from high school or we didn't just get from middle or we didn't just get responses from elementary. So you can see that it's, it's a pretty even representation. At this time though, I will show, just point out, it was 494 responses. We add well over 500 responses. So we have still, even though this represents the 494 responses of feedback, we have still received some from parents that have continued to fill that out. So this is just a snapshot of the graph of, of parents that were satisfied, very satisfied, somewhat satisfied or not satisfied at all. And the numbers one through six, those were the areas that they were commenting on. to be able to get information, uh, from them and get their feedback on what they felt went well and what they feel like we might improve on. Overall, I would like to just share that I've read every single one of the parent comments and, and I, I think overall, it, they were all very positive and that I think parents, the feedback that we received were very much appreciative of how the district jumped in and the support that we had uh, from all of the teachers and the administrators and the board on something that nobody could have ever expected and we had to, in a very short amount of time, come up with a plan. Um, but they were able to give us a lot of specific feedback that will help guide us towards providing, um, developing a plan that hopefully will be much better if we ever do need to, um, reinstate some type of a continual learning plan. So this first slide shows you that we've had pretty fair, equal representation from all grade levels, which is super helpful, that we didn't just get from high school or we didn't just get from middle or we didn't just get responses from elementary. So you can see that it's, it's a pretty even representation. Uh, at this time, though, I will show, just point out, it was four hundred and ninety-four responses. We add well over five hundred responses, so we have still, even though this represents the four hundred and ninety-four responses of feedback, we have still received some from parents that have continued to fill that out. So this is just a snapshot of the graph of, of parents that were satisfied, very satisfied, somewhat satisfied or not satisfied at all, and the numbers one through six, those were the areas that they were commenting on. So, um, as you can see, the majority of all of those areas, uh, parents were very well satisfied. The two areas that we look at, um, for how we can for sure do better is the amount of schoolwork assigned. We had some families that said, there was plenty, way too much. It was way too much for my child to have to, um, expect the amount of work. It didn't connect to the recommendations that the state gave for the amount of, um, hours in the day that kids should be working based on their grade level. Uh, and then, and then some that said, oh my gosh, there wasn't, there was enough work. Uh, and then also quality or value of the schoolwork assigned, uh, that some families said that they, their child really didn't do any new learning, which we knew was going to be difficult to pull together a continual learning plan that could also address a lot of new learning, especially for elementary and middle. High school, they had to continue on with their new learning in order for them to create their, or be able to have those, um, credits that they needed to achieve before the end of the year. So this was another area of, of looking at our academic needs, social, emotional needs, the quality of device access, the quality of internet access, their comfort level using Google Classroom, their comfort, comfort level using Skyward and using ClassDojo, which that's just elementary. There weren't middle or high, um, teachers that you were using ClassDojo. So again, you can see that overwhelmingly, parents felt that they were satisfied or somewhat satisfied. And those that were not satisfied at all, we were able to take those comments and be able to see why were they not satisfied, so that we can address that through our planning. You can go on to the, so then what, I'm not gonna read all of these, cause there's a lot, but, uh, a lot of the satisfaction comments, um, are on the left side of the, of, on the one side of the, the slide, and then the other side are some of the suggestions. Uh, but this really helps us to see those specifics of, for instance, I can see the one, need training for parents with Google Classroom. You know, that's something that we're already talking about, is that at the beginning of the year, based on whatever our school is going to look like, we need to make sure that we have determined that we're using one platform that's consistent across the board and that we're able to plan for how we could go about training parents and students to make sure that they are understanding what, what that platform is and how it can be used and how it incorporates their classwork. So all of those areas, um, there were a lot of families that just felt like, I have, I have no idea how to do this. And we can appreciate that. So some of the things that we can take from these comments are how can we support parents more so than even just a phone call? Are there other ways? Can we think outside the box on how we might be able to support parents in the event that something like this were to occur again? So these conversations are happening and we are definitely using the feedback that, that we have received from parents. Uh, we were looking at specifically Skyward Family Access. Um, is this a pot, is this a area that we can expand more, making sure? We know our secondary families use Skyward a lot for their communication, but would it work for elementary? So, um, we, I just kinda listed, um, the specifics of how often Skyward was accessed by families. Uh, so that's what the numbers are, how many comments were, um, made with that specific piece of feedback. Uh, some of those, as far as, you know, are they, are they truly using it for? A lot of them are using it to check on their kids' grades. Have they turned in, have they turned in the assignments and checking on if they have been graded or not? And then on the up, opposite side of the column is some of those questions that they had. We had both areas, for instance, daily emails were confusing, uh, meaning that was just, they were getting too much. So how do we go about streamlining that communication process when we're, uh, when we're looking at what helping parents to understand? Apparently, a lot of our kids don't really inform their parents of the things that, that they know that they might be assigned to or, um, so parents can't always depend on their student to be able to give them that information. So that's the, something too, that we've talked about is how do we go about making sure that parents are getting the same information that their students are getting, especially for secondary? Uh, so that, those are also key pieces of, of information that we're considering. And then one other area was talking about how they felt, uh, rating how the school connection, the connection that their child had felt like they had between, um, school and themselves during that last quarter. So you can see at the bottom, I've just kind of listed those that, uh, felt like it was worse, that their connection to school was, was much less, uh, is that, uh, all of those things that we might have, have, um, can, really considered, is that it was just the abrupt change, there was no human interaction, which that's difficult for a lot of our kiddos, um, that sometimes, some felt that there was only negative communication and we didn't hear the positive communication, um, throughout that time. There were a lot of home distractions, you know? We have to remember as a school system that there's multiple levels in one home, that there's pets and there's babies and there's all kinds of distractions that might be happening during their, what would be considered their school day or work time. Or kids just really felt like after the first week, so when I saw a lot of comments on here, after the first or second week, they felt like, ugh, it's kinda summer, you know? Even though it wasn't, and so that's, that's a real feeling. Uh, but then on the flip side, you had others that said, oh my gosh, this was the best thing for my student. They had energy to do more work, they weren't stressed about any kind of social, um, interactions that may have possibly caused distraction when they were in school. Um, they had more time as a family together, there was better focus when they were working on their, um, assignments. There was definitely less stress, uh, so there were some, some strengths. I know we had one teacher who said that they had, um, that there were some students that, um, typically struggled when they were in school, but really were doing great with their work that they were doing outside of school. So, so as teachers, then we have to look at, so how can we, when we do go back to, to our, our normal structure or a structure, how can we still continue to work with those students that might work better in a more, um, quiet atmosphere and such? So there's a lot of this feedback that, um, regardless of what our structure of our classrooms look like, that we can use to try to have good conversations about personalizing our kids' learning. And then engagement, same thing, is our list of parents who felt like their students were less engaged, why? And, um, there's, those students who felt like they were more engaged in those kind of situations too. So they're very similar on both, on both of those, school connection and engagement. And so then, again, I'm not gonna read through all these, but this is a good opportunity for you to be able to read through these, um, is just what were their most successful things that they found about the structure of, of um, our continual learning plan and what were their least successful aspects? So again, we can take those least successful and think about, okay, how can, how can we address those? But we can also take those that were most successful and say, how can we replicate that and make that more consistent across the board? Cause we know, we heard numerous times, there were some teachers that did, um, really over than what any parent would have expected, and then they had other teachers that maybe didn't follow or, or, um, provide as much for their student that they felt like they could have done more. So how do we as a system make sure that we are being much more consistent about what we're providing for our students in this kind of an atmosphere? And then I'm gonna let Josh or Shannon talk about this bed feedback.
So about the same time the survey went out, Shannon and I held, um, a number of parent forums with special ed parents. We had about fifty parents who, uh, participated in, in one of the forums. We used some questions to kind of guide it. Our takeaway was, um, very similar to what the survey showed. There's a lot of those same concerns about, um, learning the device, learning, um, new apps, new approaches. But overall, they were really supportive of what our school offered during, um, during the closure. Uh, there were several trends that kinda came out of it, though. Um, communication, we learned a lot. Uh, we had different teams that took different approaches and, um, we had some teams that every team member was reaching out to the parent on a weekly basis. And we had at least one team that had talked to us in advance and said, hey, we'd like to do this. We'd like to cut down on the number of people, um, contacting the parent on a weekly basis, just to keep from overwhelming. So we're gonna pick a point of, of contact, we're gonna have one person who will coordinate with the team and then reach out. Um, we saw that as a good idea. The interesting thing in meeting with parents is many of them did not. They wanted to hear from their speech path and the occupational therapist separate. Um, so I think we learned a lot as far as our delivery model. Uh, we also heard repeatedly that they really wanted, uh, they really wanted either virtual instruction through Zoom or Google Meets, or they wanted, um, even video uh, in some places where we did a lot of other things to provide support initially. Um, we heard a few places, preschool was a huge highlight in almost every conversation. They did videos, they did science experiments. I mean, there were a number of things that they were doing to keep their families engaged throughout the, throughout the process. The other place that we heard over and over again were speech language pathologists. Um, we actually had some parents express that they felt like their kids had made gains. In part, they knew what they were working on, because they were in the sessions as part of the sessions. Um, so there's, there were a lot of positives. There were a few things that, um, we would do different, uh, moving forward, or we heard from families. There was a lot about, uh, my child is used to working with specific staff, specific paraprofessionals, specific teachers. You know, are there ways for us to utilize our paraprofessional staff differently uh, to be able to answer questions of students or, or to respond to families in the future? I think there's a lot we could do that way. The other thing we heard repeatedly, uh, as far as academic instruction was concerned are two things. One, um, making sure we're prioritizing work. When we split up and staff started working from home, uh, and we heard this on the English language learner side as well, we saw a lot of working in silos, that everybody was working really hard to get their area done, that really for our special ed students, what we saw was my classroom teacher or my science teacher, whoever they sent me work, and the special ed teacher making sure that I was getting support, sent additional work and that it just kept stacking on top of each other. And so I think there's some ways for us to do a better job of prioritizing what do those students really need and making sure we're communicating a little bit differently. The other piece that parents saw difference was in, um, how we provided accommodations and modifications. That there were things that they were used to getting, um, when their child's in the classroom, that then when we went into this model, and again, I think it's a communication piece, uh, that those things didn't translate, they didn't happen. And so, uh, I think there's some, there's some real positive takeaways for us. I think there's also some things in how we would guide our staff differently, um, in the future. I did, uh, we did reach out to the board in, in regards to speech language, and so we asked some questions there. Um, even as successful as our speech services were, I expect it to be one of our highest areas for compensatory services in the fall. And that, I would remind the board, part of what we did in providing services is we provided a small percentage of the services. We weren't anywhere near, um, what some of our students would have. So some of our students may have three or four days a week of speech services, may have been receiving direct services one day a week. By law, parents will have the opportunity to look at, uh, with their team, how their child progressed, what amount of services were provided, um, and we're waiting for guidance, but we expect to hear from the State Department that we will be due to provide some compensatory services to those, um, students. So, uh, we're preparing for some of those things. I think a lot of other areas, when you talk academics, uh, they're due for compensatory services, but there's only so much time in their day. And I'm gonna, we're assuming based on feedback from families, um, that they will view an area like speech as more of a therapy, something that, um, their child needs. We would probably argue they need all of it, um, but I'm anticipating that that'll be a really high area for us in the fall. Um, and so that's, that's where the addition of, uh, speech language pathologists for next year is coming from.
I have a question.
Sure.
So they won't be receiving any of this when we have our summer school?
We are providing, uh, we will start in, uh, in summer. We've gotten mixed feedback from families and part of this is still, we were contacting them in May and I'd be curious if, even as we start contacting a little bit closer to July, if, um, just the feeling around COVID nineteen has changed so much even in the last couple of weeks. But we had, we had a number of parents who opted still not to send their child, uh, to E S Y in July and we're still looking at what we can do there. We'll be, be providing everything face to face in July, except for our speech language services. And that's more of a, an issue of staffing for us than it is, um, you know, parents asking for it that way. Um, we've got staff members that either because of their other employment or because of their own health issues, that, um, we've communicated with all of our families and, and they were very supportive of continuing to provide um, more through a teletherapy model. Uh, we'll have staff in the building along with the child, assisting the child if they're attending E S Y. But we've had no issues with parents, uh, with an issue there. So yeah, we're, we're anticipating our elementary summer school, the majority of them were very happy to get their kids back into school. Um, and really it was more the middle school and high school side that we're seeing low numbers than what we've seen in the past. Other questions around special ed that I can answer? Okay, thank you.
So I just kinda put together really where our major themes are that, um, and this is something in addition to the specific feedback that then we can take as committee and really look to see how can we, uh, be proactive about the plans that we're moving forward? So, uh, instruction, definitely, if there is some type of in-person teaching happening, not just packet work, but that we have some type of, um, whether it's through videos or, or truly, you know, um, real-time teaching that happens, that, that seemed to be, uh, most, um, effective. Uh, the clear assignments and guidelines and instruction, that grading, um, not that we would have to have grading done within twenty-four hours of turn-in date, but that was a feedback that having a much quicker turnaround time, so that parents understood, um, at least that there was some type of mark in there that, that was turned in. It was more about, less about if it was graded, more about they just needed to know, has it been turned in or not? And what are their missing assignments that their student might have? Flexibility with dates, with our, with teachers and with, um, students being able to turn in their assignments, being flexible workload, um, parent support, which I've kind of already addressed, both of those. Logistics, one of those, those are, that's the main piece that we're making some decisions about now is what's, what would be that one platform for instruction? What does it mean to be consistent with our communication? And how are we going about, um, being, uh, communicating with, with families? Um, and then, like I mentioned, uh, making sure parents know the same information that students know, so that parents can understand if their students are right on track or not with, with what their thought is. And then, uh, as strong was what Mr. Robinson kinda talked about too, is that collaboration to provide support, so that the classroom teacher, um, if they receive any kind of sped services, title service, E L L services, that everyone's working together so that we can kinda streamline that communication and make sure that this, the work that, uh, students are receiving really is personalized towards them. And then finally, the preferred method and time for communication. Um, the preferred method, we were actually a little surprised that email was families, um, really preferred method, just because we had heard some comments that, gosh, it's so hard when you get emails from every teacher. So we were somewhat surprised that that was, um, the overwhelming, uh, preferred method, but, uh, you know, we wanna take what parents are, are recommending or giving feedback and so that's definitely in consideration of, but, but I think we're still looking at how do we go about streamlining? So they're not getting, if they have eight, you know, seven teachers at the high school and in addition to, you know, maybe they have a total of, you know, ten teachers that they're getting some kind of correspondence on, how can we streamline that? So they're not getting, they're not having to really weed through all of their emails. Uh, and then as far as the time for communication, the reason we ask for that is looking at if we did have to have some type of alternate schedule, uh, when are parents most available? And so pleasantly, uh, sixty-six percent of our families would be able to communicate with teachers during their contract day. Uh, and then we did have some that would prefer that evening time, which is something that we are also in, um, having conversations about. So any questions about the feedback or how we're using this information?
Let's just hope we don't need it.
Right.
I think it's gonna make us better educators for going through this. I wonder if we don't put it back on the shelf and use it for, if we have students that are out on long-term for whatever reason, health reasons or whatnot, that now we've kinda already been down this path and maybe we can modify and use it for those students that, you know, that way they don't get behind for whatever reason they can't attend school.
I think we've had some feedback also from teachers that they have learned some different ways, um, kind of innovative ways to be able to provide their instruction and that regardless, that would continue. So I think that's important to note too, that our teachers have also learned a lot of new ways of providing that instruction, so.
Thank you.
And I just wanna say that, uh, I couldn't be more proud of our administration and staff and how they've continued learning and obviously even to the satisfaction of our students, uh, to continue learning during the pandemic. It was really an excellent response by everyone.
Thank you, and, and, and I know that we had a lot of people working very hard.
Absolutely, it's appreciated, for sure.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we will move on to section six point oh two, our reopening plans, Dr. Cobs?
So the third group, really it's the fourth group, as you talk about parents, teachers, special ed, and we also had a group of parents, ten parents. And we also had a group of parents, 10 parents, two from each of the three elementary schools, from the middle school and from the high school, whose job was to go through different options for reopening and really help us understand from a parent perspective, which would be most conducive to their lives and to their students. And we went through the five that are on here and added six based off of feedback from, from them. So this board at some point in time will have to decide what school looks like in August. And the, the point of this document was to identify the different ways in which we think that we can enlist an educational system and be able to do so within the, the current structures that, that we have without major disruption. Some of them are significant disruptions, but certainly capable of being done. But the, the first is a full reopen is normal. What we got from the parent group, from the 10 parents that we met with is that this is first and foremost where they would like to be. Everything that we're getting from the state would also indicate that this would be the expectation, that we start back in school as normal with, with all of our students and somewhat modified expectations in terms of how we gather at the beginning of the day, how we transition classes, how we do lunches, how we do recesses, those types of things. But certainly there's a lot of questions that would need to be answered within that system to try to make sure that we maintain a healthy environment for kids, especially as we get closer to October, November, the beginning of flu season, when we, if we still do not have a vaccine for COVID-19, that may result in some different issues for our school and how we, how we address them. But overwhelmingly, what we've heard from parents is that they're ready to send their kids back to school. We do have other options. One would be that we return in small groups. There is some questions that are still yet to be determined by K A S B, or not by K S B, K S D E. K A S B would be a part of that considering that the governing body would have to make a proposal to the legislature to change how we, how we drive the, the accreditation piece of schools, most notably the, the hour requirement. But if you were to do a half-day, and ultimately what this would look like is half of your kids coming in the morning, half of them coming in the afternoon, or half of them coming on Monday, the other half of them coming on Tuesday, so that you have very small class sizes, that you still meet all of the CDC requirements that would exist there. We can do that, and that is not out of the realm of possibility for us. What we need to remember that when we do that, there's, we give up something in the process. The contract day remains the same. The number of days in which our teachers are going to work remain the same. The number of days in which students go to school remain the same, except it's probably cut in half because they're only attending halftime. Right, so without understanding and a decision from the state as to whether or not a student who attends a half-day and not the second day, or a full day and not the second day, whether the requirements are based upon schools being open or requires, requirements are based on the majority of your students attending. That, that's the real question at this point. If there is some threshold that, that 70% of our kids have to be enrolled, this is probably not, or have to be in attendance, this is probably not an option for us. Because at that point, we have to change contracts. That becomes a huge issue for us to try to navigate. But it is possible depending on what, what the issues created by K S D are. We can also provide a distant, distance learning environment. We've learned a great deal, you just heard some of the feedback that we've got. We spent a lot of time talking about how a remote environment may be beneficial. There are other things that we, that we see at play. Internet service has not been a major consideration of the parents that we've talked to and, and their ability to, to meet our requirements, although we know that it is. Some of our parents were turning things in via phone. So when they talk about internet service, they may say that they have internet service. Is it good enough internet service to teach the way that we want to teach in a remote learning environment? Not a seven-week period, right? A true remote learning environment, I doubt it. Not for the, not for all of our families. So we are in some conversations to see how we can provide that service to everybody. We certainly have enough devices to ensure that every kid has a device moving forward. We can do all of those things. We also have the opportunity for our teachers to have a much greater understanding of what platforms look like. Had conversations about creating a singular platform with Google Classroom that every teacher is working off of Google Classroom. So we don't have pockets of teachers doing different things, different families trying to learn different platforms for their students to be successful in that environment. And even different communicative devices. How can we make this as seamless as possible for parents in a remote environment? We can do this and we can be very good at it. Is it as good as having kids in our classrooms? The answer is no, right? And that answer has been determined long before any of this. If you look at the actual data from virtual programs and the number of students that are successful in a virtual program, even some of the best virtual programs that have been doing it for long periods of time, the success rate is minimal at best. Certainly not where, certainly not at acceptable levels of what we would determine in our district. So that is something that we need to think about. The other one would be to push back the start and end date. This is one that was an initial one when we didn't know what the beginning of the school year was going to look like, whether or not they were going to open us up, all of those things. That looks like it's not necessarily an issue at this point, but there are some different caveats to it. Part of the conversation with, with the families that we worked with and with some, with some teacher groups was, now that we pretty much know that we're going to start on time, that's not an issue. If we're shut down in the middle of the year, what is our best course of action? Is it to try to provide a remote environment during that time? Is it to try, to try to provide small group learning during that time? Or is it to say, no, we're going to take some time away and we're going to roll those weeks back to the end of the year and have true school from May to mid-June, whatever it happens to be? We can work within the calendar in any, any of those options, depending on how we want to communicate it with, with our association and make sure that our teachers can meet their contractual obligations. And certainly that's a conversation that we would want to share with them. But that is another option for us. It was not a great option that parents wanted to look at. Nearly all of our parents indicated that they would rather have something for their kids to do during that time than to not have anything for their kids to do and add those dates to the end of the year. But again, it, it is, it is an option for us. A combination of two and three is the, this is, this is one that was provided and somewhat from our, from our parent group. But in essence, what it was is, is can we provide a half-day or a half-group instruction in one period while also providing remote instruction with the same kids, right? So if we were to use our board as an example, if on one board meeting week, we had three board members, the other four would be joining us remotely, but we only met with three in person. The next time we met, those four would come in, meet in person, the other three would, would join us remotely. So you always had very small groups, but every student was a part of the conversation and, and working through it. Now, this creates a lot of different hurdles, certainly hurdles that are not overcomeable. But it is a, a different environment in which you have to worry about parents not wanting their students seen in a, in a, in an open forum, which you would consider Google Classroom or whichever, whichever platform we utilized at that point in time. You would have to deal with teachers agreeing to be videoed all the time, which is, has been historically pushed back against. There's just a lot of things to overcome in that environment. But if you want to do what's best for kids, if you had to have very small class sizes, that would certainly be an option for us to explore. The last one is, is four 10-hour days for teachers. The reason that this came up is that when we talk to, to parents, if we had a remote environment, they wanted clear guidelines of when their kids would have to be online, right? When, when is class time, when are teachers available? But they also indicated that, that they weren't always going to be available for that and they wanted access to teachers and, and they were smart enough and understood the process enough to know that if we created a time, a, a contract time for teachers, 7:30 to 4 o'clock, in which they were to be accessible to their kids, then when parents got home at night, they might not be accessible to parents because their contract day is over, right? So the, the notion of four 10-hour days became, we have a normal school day and then we have this time from 6 to 8 that we would have available to parents, four days a week, resulting in your Fridays off. So you really start working extended hours for four days and that's your work week. All of them different and viable options, all of them we're capable of doing. Whichever one we choose to, to utilize, if we have to make a decision on, on how to do things differently, are going to result in some extended conversations for us to, to work out the logistics of those things. But this is a culmination of a lot of innovative thinking when you start looking at, how can we teach 2,400 kids in a manner differently than we've done in the past? And again, we have, we have incredible educators and we have great parents that provided us with, with great ideas. And ultimately, one of those options, or a, a tangent of one of those options is going to be the best for us moving forward, depending on what happens to us. And at this point, everybody's kind of thinking around October, November, December time. I think most of us believe that we'll have the opportunity to open school on time in August as we, as we want to. This board will have to make a decision as to what that looks like, whether we're going to say, yes, open the doors and, and let's deal with all of our kids and, and schools and principals and teachers make sure that we have our kids in a safe environment, or we're going to use one of those other options to, to work through. But I'm open for any questions. I don't have all the answers, but maybe we can provide some insight if you have specific questions about any of the options.
I had a question. Obviously, obviously you don't know the specifics. Like you just said, when you envision the students at home, like that half of the board is out, do you envision the kids being in, like at their computer, like for the normal school day, school length of the normal day? Or would it be?
So I think those, those are some of the things that we're going to get from, from K A S B and K S D E. They made it very clear to us that there should be time restrictions and constraints on, on what we were giving to students in the, the initial seven-week period for us, right? For other districts, it was much longer than seven weeks. But when, when we talk to them about the feedback that they've received from that, I honestly believe that they would probably recant that if they could. Because what it really did was created a situation in which not much was happening in a lot of schools. So I think they would, they would revert back to, you need to spend as much time as you need to spend out of the school day to meet the standards that you want to accomplish during that time. That is why I think they're sending out the competencies, you guys haven't seen them yet, as they're still being reviewed. But there, there's a group of professionals working with K S D E and K A S B to develop a list of competencies. And part of what they're trying to do is indicate that the time, the seat time requirements, and we'll see how this actually plays out. But the initial piece of it was that if you can show that students have met this competency or this list of competencies, you could waive the seat time requirements. So in essence, what they're saying is, we don't care how much time you spend with their kids as long as they can do these things before you're done. So that will ultimately help us in this notion of how much time do we need to spend with kids? But the feedback that we got from parents at times was, we didn't spend enough time with kids. That we need to do more Zoom things, we need to have more conversations, even if it's not purely academic, that that time with teachers and with, with students together is an important piece of that. So I don't know the full answer to your question. What I would tell you is that we would try to spend much more time with our kids. That we would, I think what we would want to do is create a timeframe for teachers that here is our contract day. We need to do things within this day to make sure that we're meeting our students' needs. Now, that contract day may be different than what it looks like right now, but still an expectation for all staff to meet these particular requirements with their kids.
So are you looking at one-on-one with the kids or like a Zoom classroom type scenario?
Both. I think part of that is going to have to be some one-on-one situations, given the needs of the child, which is no different than the classroom right now. There are times within your classroom that you have one-on-one situations with your students. There are times when you can do small groups, there are times that you do whole group. Every, every classroom creates its, its individual needs. But I think that, you know, if, if what we're talking about is a true remote environment, then I think that there are, there, so there are some things that you can do within, within Zoom and, and Google Hangouts or with any of them that you can do like breakout sessions. So you see Josh's group do breakout sessions a lot. The groups that were doing those competencies start as a whole group and then the, the facilitator of the meeting can say, you two are going into this group, you two are going in this group. They can still facilitate all of the groups, but not everybody in the Zoom meeting is together anymore. So now you might have two or three people in that Zoom meeting doing similar things. You can do some of that, it's very, very different. But again, we'll, would have to wait and see how it all.
Yeah, I'm just thinking the kids at home, the distractions at home, how that would impact.
Especially if there's not anybody home. It's very difficult, it's difficult enough for high school students. It's more difficult for middle school students. But if you're a first grade student whose parents are going to work every day and you're not allowed to go to school and you're at home and nobody's telling you that you've got to get on this and managing you while you're, I don't, man, that's a, it's a testament to anybody that can actually get their kids to do it. It's certainly incredibly difficult. We'll have some kids that can do that without an issue. And we'll have some kids that will constantly be working at, how do we get them engaged? And that's where we have to start looking at, what do we do with, with personalized learning, those types of things? Other questions? It's a difficult topic and one that we don't know all the answers to yet, but still much more to be discussed and evaluated.
I think where we went so far, we've done very good of charting uncharted waters and the unknown is the, is the hard part, but I think we'll be, we'll be okay.
I don't have any doubt that any of the six options that we presented and a possible seventh or eighth that, that may come up. I don't have any doubt that our staff can provide instruction in that, in that type of process very well. With, with Dean as our tech director and the, the amazing things that he can do, Josh and Amy and Shannon, all of our principals, they can help our staff do the things that they need to do and the incredible dedication that we have of our teachers. Some of our teachers did just incredible things during this time. I have no doubt that we can provide great instruction. What I will say is that there is, there is no comparison to what we get when we have students together in a classroom. No comparison. We can do a great job of remote and alternative learning. We have shown time and time again, the best way for us to address the learning needs of our students is face-to-face, in-person instruction. And so if we can do those things, if we have the ability to do them, I think it's important for us to do them.
I do too. When you read, when you went through the, the seniors video that they made, you know, what do you miss most? They missed their friends and their teachers and that was important for them to be at school with people.
It's, it's interesting, this is, this is the, the fundamental issue that schools face nowadays. When you hear the major concerns about what happened with the COVID-19 pandemic and, and students not going to school, you heard whether or not students could eat and you heard social emotional. Rarely in any commercial, other than somebody trying to sell you a digital curriculum to your kid to, to make it, did you hear about the issues with learning? This is what has happened to our schools. We have become the hub of all things kid-related. The school's responsibility has become, has become to provide all of those things. And we, we heard it more often than not during this time, rarely did we hear about academics. We heard about all of the other things. We heard about, about behaviors and social emotional and, and eating and, and kids being able to communicate with one another and, and what it means to, to socialize. Heard about all of those things. For whatever reason, the expectation is just, from a learning standpoint, we'll fix it somewhere down the road. For whatever reason, the expectation is just, from a learning standpoint, we'll fix it somewhere down the road. We have to recognize that our teachers are great at their jobs. And the impact of, of what has happened academically on our kids is going to be profound. We will see it. When we get them back in August and we start trying to identify the gaps in learning over an entire quarter of them not being in school, even though we've provided access to certain things, this will be a, a distinct gap. And, and it is going to take an awful lot for us to overcome those things.
They've not been in school for six months.
Yes.
Real, I mean, really.
Yes. Yes. So, but those are things that honestly, pretty exciting, I think, to teachers to see how well they can do. Okay? That's why I have no other questions.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb. You've all been presented a personnel report. If somebody would like to make a motion to approve said report?
I'm moved.
Second, I want it noted that it's a two-page report. We've never had one of those before.
That is acknowledged. It was moved by Chris Cunningham and seconded by Susan Ward. That we approve the personnel report. All in favor, please raise your hand. Harold, are you voting?
I don't think he can hear us when we talk.
Harold. Everybody can put their hands down. We've all, okay, good. All right, that passes 6-0. All right. We are on to announcements. Dr. Cobb?
Summer school starts next week. Athletic programs start next week. Actually, summer school starts in July. I should've said driver's ed starts next week. It's my bad, my old typo there. One of the things that hopefully we recognize with summer school is that it's not a mandatory piece for, for our staff. And summer vacation is a big piece of what they do. We are still trying to find enough features to fill all the spots that we can for summer school. We'll continue to work with them to try to do so. But it's always difficult to try to get staff to give up their summers after a very difficult year, rightfully so. We'll continue to work through that. Driver's ed starts on Monday. Athletic programs start on Monday. Summer school starts July 6th. It'll be July before we do it.
All right. Thank you. We are down to adjourning the meeting. If somebody would like to make a motion to do so?
I'm moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. There we go. All right, that passes 6-0, thank you.